Called the meeting to order. This is recap, we've got grievance that was officially brought before the board on January 11th, and we're going to address that. I did want to share that I think all those that came today, apologize that we're in a cramped space, it wasn't our intent. The professional learning lab where we normally meet, they've got testing going on in there, so we're kind of limited at our options. And we were hoping to kind of get together in person for this meeting. So I'm sorry that it's not optimal in terms of what we wanted for space, but it's going to have to work for today. So thank you for those that joined us. And also for those who are watching, I guess via Zoom, is that right? It's on Zoom as well. So without the recap, as we, there was a grievance presented to the teachers that we were sharing, that was shared with us on January 11th. The teachers had a chance to speak about that a little bit. Also, we had, we previously had application from the principal as well as Dr. Hocker. And there's also additional statement from Dr. Hocker. Rather than talking at that meeting, he had a written statement. The teachers had asked that they could also have a kind of rebuttal letter, which we granted them permission to have that. So they presented us with the unified rebuttal letter yesterday prior to noon. In addition to that, the high school principal, the administration also, after listening to that meeting on the 11th, they're not participating at the time, but also had some comments they wanted to make in response to some of the things the teachers said. We also gave them the opportunity to present a letter which respected that, but the same deadline by yesterday noon. We did receive both letters prior to noon, those were sent to the board. So you have those in your materials to look over and to consider as part of this discussion. So that's the buildup, I guess. Traditionally, we have a motion before we would have any official discussion. I don't know if there's any pre-conversation, any questions about stuff that we received or leading up to this process. I'll just, I guess I will just state for the record, I know as board members, it's not a pleasant position to be in. We don't love the idea of serving as judges or jury, so to speak, and when it comes to it, we'd rather be part of the process to find solutions and so forth, but that's part of the responsibility that we have. And so we will serve in that way. So do we have a motion from the board? We need a motion anyway, and then we have a discussion. So however you motion, that's going to, you need a second when we start having discussion with respect to that. Well, that's because nobody knows how much it's going to be, so. And I guess I would say this, really, there's choices would include a motion to approve the grievance, or there'd be a motion to deny the grievance, or if you have a creative variation, that's your prerogative too, but that is really what we're, as a starting point.
I move to approve the grievance.
We have a motion to approve the grievance. Do we have a second? Here, one second. We have a second to approve the grievance, so before we have a vote, let's have a discussion. Yeah, so anyone can start, and we'll pick the time we need to go through this.
From my reading and my understanding, this comes down to whether the contract was violated.
Okay.
It doesn't make a difference how much money it costs the district. It doesn't make a difference if teachers pitch in and help or not. It's just whether the district has violated the contract.
I think, yeah, I appreciate that. Anyone see anything different without, want to add to that?
Yeah, I'll add to it. It gets confusing because the whole concept, the core concept that I read or the reiterating is the online classes for the high school, right? So that seems to be the sticky point. So when I read through the grievance letter, they talk about all of it. It says, not only do teachers have a plan for students in their classrooms every day, but they also have to plan for students in their hybrid classes, prepare for students who are distant learning because of COVID factors. And then later on, they said, just trying to make contact with the in-class students and hybrid students, and they talk about that, right? So, so those are problems that we've had, obviously district one. All teachers have had those problems. So there's a, there's this online only, and then there's the greater portion of what other teachers had to deal with. Some of the rebuttals that the administration has said, you know, they of course talked about the stipending, they talked about additional temporary employees were at the schools unavailable. And then the grievance said, well, that doesn't count because the stipend was available to all teachers, and the additional temporary employees were available to all teachers, and not just us with the online. But part of the grievance, they talk about the problems that all teachers have had. So I'm having a hard time separating the, you know, the factors of to what to consider. Is it, is it your entire job as a whole, or is it just this little piece of online teaching? What do you think? Are we, are we talking about the whole job? Or are we talking just about the online only kids?
Yeah, I appreciate that. I think, to me, I summed it up as Kim kind of said. Do, obviously, there was, things were different. I mean, that was, it was super accelerated with the pandemic. And so things were very different in that the, going to the online platform, the necessity to do so and how that was treated. So the question, there's two big questions here. One question has to do with, is the work that teachers, in this case, we're specifically looking at the grievance and the teachers with that, in that respect. But certainly, we have to take bigger picture to ensure that this applies to all the teachers in our district. And so is the work that was asked of them outside of their contracted agreement? And then the second piece, which is a huge piece to me, and I noticed this, is how you interpret the seven and three-quarter hours. In other words, is that, as the attorney that was representing the teachers said, is that seven and three-quarter hours a ceiling? In other words, their contract's based on that being a maximum? Or as the district attorney alluded to, is that a floor? In other words, is that the minimum seven and three-quarter hours in which teachers are expected to work? But really, the expectation is, you know, they can be outside of that. Sometimes this, what these are the students dictate more. And even in response to the teachers and the grievance who sent some emails about that, some of them said, saw differently as well. Some said, you know, I get, it's not, I'm willing to work outside of that and do what's needed for the students, yada, yada. So that's very complicated, and I don't know that however we rule today in this grievance. But to me, in future negotiations, that is a key fundamental point that we're going to have to figure out moving forward at the district. Because that dictates everything. Because if you truly believe that seven and three-quarter hours is an absolute ceiling in terms of what you're asked to do, required you are expected to do, and you're working beyond that, then you're working beyond your contracted agreement. If you see that as a floor, and which is a minimum into which your salary is based, and the real expectation is, within reason, you're expected to put in time above and beyond that, then it's not outside of the contract to do some of those things. And so I don't know that however we decide today is going to solve that critical piece, right? I mean, I, it's, I think it's critical in terms of how we look at this, but it's, I don't know that we're going to get resolution. But I do think, again, for the district moving forward, that's going to have to be figured out, be it through the teacher negotiations or administrative negotiations, wherever that comes. We have got to figure that piece out. But going back to what you're saying, to what Kim initially said, and what you're alluding to, to me, that's kind of what this boils down to, is, is what the teachers, was that above and beyond their contract or not? And so I, I think that's a big piece to it.
And as you say that, you do think about, you know, Kim mentioned it, the breach of contract. So we think of two years ago when we were going through negotiations. Obviously, no one knew what was going to happen two years later. But does that, you know, mean when something like this, if it were to ever happen again, does that mean that negotiations have to be redone? Contracts have to be redone every time there's a change? I thought of, even when I asked Mr. Michelson at our last meeting as far as his additional duties as athletic director, anytime there is someone who steps up to help out in some way because of this. Let's say something happens to a teacher, there's a change. Do we have many people who are stepping into roles where those things are not being acknowledged, and they may not be taking any compensation? Are we now, when you look at contracts, can they come back later and say the same thing? That, well, I did help so-and-so in this capacity, and I was never, you know, compensated for that? I think, when you look at it that way, it is, I mean, this has been very challenging. I agree, everything that we've been through. So it makes this very difficult as far as, you know, where, I've been there as a teacher, a coach, and the time you put in, so I understand that. And we've asked our district, all our employees to do, you know, they've all gone above and beyond something. It's very, very difficult. I just, I don't know what the solution is here.
I also think we said, redone the law.
Yes, go ahead.
I also think we set the precedent by having online elementary teachers because we knew, we felt we knew that our normal classroom teachers would not be able to fill both roles. So you have the precedence where we have online teachers for elementary. And then.
Correct. With, what do you want to speak of that to? I don't disagree with that completely, but it's fair to know that for the online teachers for elementary, a couple things. One is, yes, teachers that are going, I mean, students who are going full-time distance learning have a special teacher assigned to them to do that. However, students in their elementary classrooms who are out because of, for any kind of reason, whether it be quarantined for two weeks or those kinds of things, they don't automatically go over and are serviced by that online teacher. That elementary teacher still have to find a way to teach those students. And so, yes, but also no. I mean, those teachers also have extra work in that regard, or different work, or because, extra demands because of how that's set up in the pandemic. And so the trickier thing too, and this is where I wish I had the work at finding a solution for everybody than having to kind of rule, so to speak. But when you get into the back and forth of how it was presented, the options the teachers had, you know, whether it's edenology or schology, or what was expected, what was done, you know, the administration contends that, again, asserts, I guess, that teachers had the opportunity to teach in such a way that they could have serviced both the online and in-person kids at the same time, and kind of avoided extra stuff. And I can certainly see teachers are saying, well, that's not exactly true, or that's not right. That might be true in some cases and not the others. And so it's definitely not simple. I mean, it's a muddy situation. And I, and again, regardless of what is ruled here today, there's a lot to figure it out and fix. And that's why I'm hoping the board, whatever is decided, can assist in figuring that kind of stuff out moving forward, because it's, there's, there's a likelihood that this can and will come up another way, like Michelle would, who knows what the future holds? But this is just, it's, it got exposed because it wasn't very clear. So I think it does go back to, is this outside, is it outside the contract? Or isn't it? And, and, you know, again, you're correct in that. In this particular case, we're looking specifically at the 20, the agreements that we have with those teachers involved. And it's, it's realistic to also know that there's lots of other teachers in our district that have been affected in the pandemic and had to do things differently. And, you know, again, circumstances are different in all those cases too. But it is bigger than this, this, but this is what we're specifically looking at today. So other, I mean, I, I guess one big piece I thought about too, in the big picture, I, like all of you, I thought about this for days. And one big piece that I kept coming back to is, does appreciation mandate compensation? And what I mean by that is, certainly, the board and the community and everyone appreciates everything that the teachers have done during this pandemic and before the pandemic, and certainly during the pandemic, to educate the students at all levels. Elementary, you know, through high school, preschool, all the way through, Head Start, all that. They've had to do things differently to make this work, and that's been very challenging. And it's, and we get that. But does appreciation mandate compensation? So. Other thoughts? I mean, we will do a roll call vote, but again, I want to see, this is the time where we discuss this.
Want to go back to the seven and three-quarters hours on Dr. Hocker's rebuttal, or I don't know, grievance letter, original grievance letter. He talks about, I also believe your interpretation of section five of the negotiated agreement, working conditions, is, it's correct. Section five states that teachers are expected to work a consecutive seven and three-quarter hour shift each day, as dictated by the needs of the students, as assigned by the building. The way I read this, it sets the floor in the amount of hours each teacher is required to work, and not the ceiling. It does not say that teachers shall work no more than seven and three-quarters hours each day. In addition, I would note that the agreement states nothing regarding limiting the number of classes each teacher must teach. So part of the contract interpretation is how you read the seven and three-quarters. Obviously, we know that the seven and three-quarters is the minimum, right? The teachers are required to be at school for seven and three-quarters hours. And I think we can all concede that teachers work more than seven and three-quarters hours. I mean, I, they've worked more than seven and three-quarters hours prior to the pandemic. They worked seven more than seven and three-quarters hours during the pandemic. I'll definitely agree to that. But I also think that they are paid more than seven and three-quarters hours. But when you look at their teacher salaries, if we were to break it down and say, all you're required to work is seven and three-quarters hours, Monday through Friday, no holidays, no summers, I would say that your salaries are absorbent. So in my mind, I think there's an unstated thing that's saying, yes, teachers work more than seven and three-quarters hours. But I also think that the district compensates them for working more than seven and three-quarters hours. I think it's just a known thing that teachers put in more hours than just the workday. So I don't know if that puts the teachers on the hook, the district on the hook for paying one and three-quarters hours. And if it is, if a teacher works no more than seven and three-quarters hours, then I think what Brent alluded to before is that we have to renegotiate the contracts because basically we have to either hire more teachers to fill in those gaps, or more aides, or more whatever, because we're only going to squeeze seven and three-quarters hours teachers. So I don't know where you differentiate between more and different. Mr. Holhertz, in his rebuttal, this is called DHS Admin Grievance Rebuttal. He says in here, "It caused some of our most experienced staff to relive the first years of their career, and presented our newest teachers with the challenge their career degrees and career experience did not prepare them for." So it essentially leveled the teachers, right? I mean, if, if I have been teaching for 20 years, and I have 20 years of prep sheets, and, you know, I kind of haven't figured it out, right? I have it down to a science, now all of a sudden I have to do things differently. I don't know. Is it more? Is it different? I'm not a teacher, I've never taught anything in my life. So I don't know how to differentiate between different and more. Right?
You know, the other piece to this is, we're presented with one option in this grievance, and that grievance option is compensation, to compensate those. And again, we have the ability to tamper that, do some things differently, but that's what's being asked for. But I go back to, I did have, we also, one of the grievance teachers sent an email that said, it's not about the money. It's more about the concept of being, you know, in their minds, you know, forced to do more than what, you know, is contracted, or those kinds of things. And it's also about the acknowledgement of that and about the appreciation of that. And that's complicated, because I go back to, I've got it, I know you do, and I know the community has great appreciation for the extra work and time and effort that was taken. We don't even fully comprehend that, and I get that. But to solve that with compensation in that amount, and in that way, I have a difficult time with that, in the sense that I don't know that the appreciation mandates compensation. I'd like to find, and I also think, Hugh, there's two pieces to this, too. Moving forward, yeah, high school started today, full-time back the school. But it doesn't mean that things aren't going to change in terms of where online learning fits into that, and where we are going forward. And so those, that challenge is going to have to be figured out and addressed. And we all, we know that. And how we rule on this grievance doesn't solve that challenge, I don't think. I mean, I think that we're still going to have to, the district, the teachers, and the administration are going to have to work together to figure out what that means and how we're going to move forward in that context. But today, it goes back to, is what they're asking, and the extra dollars that they're asking, a compensation warranted? And is that what we need to do to address the grievance? And so.
Before we go forward, so, the way you wrote your motion, does that mean that we are agreeing to this particular compensation? Or are we agreeing to additional compensation? Because that will change the way I'm voting. So if you, so you said that, whatever, that we agree with the teachers. Does that mean we're on the hook for this pay structure that they're saying forward in the grievance?
Well, the one that was submitted on.
Yeah, I would say in full, so.
So in full, so if we vote, and we vote in favor of it, we're, that's the dollars, right? There's no second negotiation on the dollar.
Correct. And what Kim's motion is, as the grievance is presented.
As the grievance is presented, exactly.
Exactly.
Okay.
Or anything we didn't say thus far that needs that, or?
There are another, is that a number that I'm missing?
No.
Okay. Well, I wanted to know.
No, so I talked about that, and I'm a financial person, and I get stuck on financials, and it's a, you know, that's my fault. But basically, the, the dollar amount that is requested is a thorn in my side also. I mean, if we're talking about everything, you know, it's ungodly, you know? So if you taught three different classes, so you teach four classes at the high school, one's on a break, so you teach three classes. So the grievance that taught three classes are requesting a 70% pay increase over their salary, over their base salary that was agreed upon. If I taught two classes, they're asking for a 46% increase, and one class is a 22% increase, which weighs into the factor of how you're going to agree compared to whether we violate the contract.
Nothing said, as the, I can't remember how to pronounce it, last name, Gierman, maybe the attorney for, God, yes, thank you, of course. You know, he did mention at the end on the 11th that the board could look at other options, including lessening the compensation of those things. But again, I think step one is, before we talk about that specifically, is, do you believe that the, what they did during that was outside of their contract in deserving of compensation, extra compensation, I should say, an additional compensation? That's the first piece to me. If the answer, if the answer is yes, then, just around the coffee, there can be a follow-up thing, is, is that the correct amount of compensation? But the way the motion is right now, it's, this is in full, right? I mean, it's agreeing to what they said. If you vote yes, then you're agreed to that, and we're done. And I say we're done, but again, I want to be very clear that, that there is, the issue is bigger than this, and it's going to need to be figured out between the teachers and the districts, I think, regardless of how this day goes. But anybody want to add anything or change anything before we have our vote on this?
Do you have some time? Can I ask some questions?
Yeah.
How's the junior high do it? So the junior high, right, so I have, I'm a teacher, I have seven classes, six classes. And then what, one of my classes is all online kids. So if I teach math, first period, I might have all online kids. And then if I have math, second period, I have face-to-face kids. So we, we pull out little blocks for online kids at the junior high. But at the high school, they only teach three classes, so we can't pull out a block. That's, I mean, it's the schedule that's really throwing a thorn in there.
But to be fair, there's, there are going, there are options, you know, going forward to do. And, you know, that's kind of what the Holhertz's letter back was, that other options are presented going forward, that could have been changes to this, that could have, that could have maybe changed some of these things to make it better. But, you know, that was denied. The teachers in this particular case felt like compensation was the proper recourse in this. But, you know, if we were going to continue, let's say, with the hybrid or online learning or whatever, you know, there, there could be other solutions to, that both parties would find favorable to try to address this. But yes, right now, we've got, what we got?
Well, of that 25 on this, are there some that are not listed that would also fall under the online teaching? They just chose not to?
Yes, so there's, there's 25 grievance, and they account for 39 of the online classes. There was 51 total online courses taught during the first quarter. So there's 12 online courses that there are no grievance for. And so that could be four teachers, it could be 12. Right?
Any thoughts or comments? A little bit more time to. All right. With that, we will go to the old.
Let me just ask one more question.
Sure.
Is there any? And I didn't look, so I'm asking this. Is there any other information that we need to make this decision? I mean, do I, I know the DEA had an attorney look at it. Should the school district have done the same thing?
Well, I'll answer in terms of the, in terms of the attorney piece. So the school district did have an attorney look at the documents due. And that's where that, right off the bat, there's that disconnect. Because as I mentioned, Gierman stated his belief that that seven and three-quarters is a ceiling, not a, the district attorney, they grant, they're the opposite. No, that's the floor, not the ceiling. So right there, you have two attorneys that have different opinions about what that, what that means. And truly, that's, that's unfortunate, and it's a big deal, and it's got to be reconciled at some point, right? I mean, because that, to me, is, at some level, the heart of what we're kind of getting at, and what those expectations are going forward for, you know, teachers. And we all know that in our district, certainly, there's teachers that see that differently. I'm positive, because I visited with teachers, and see that same point differently. And I would, I don't know if the administration, people in the administration see it differently, or school board do, but that's very challenging as a starting point, because nobody completely understands the expectation of, of what that means. So, but in terms of more information, I don't know that.
I guess what my question is, is what Jason had brought up. So we, if I say yes, I approve, you know, I made the motion to approve the grievance, I might not agree to what the compensation for is asked for in the grievance. No, I know that.
Correct, so, right, so before, we could amend the motion to change the compensation portion. We can leave it, we could, we could vote in favor of it, and it passes as is. We could vote no, and at which point, another motion would be. We could vote no, and at which point another motion would be, could be brought to the table with this respect to this. So, um, so that's, we've got options, but
And it's my understanding that this little tidbit that Dr. Hocker, um, responded with about the floor, basically that was, that came from an attorney, basically how they interpreted. And it is, I mean, even Mr. Gimmins said basically, we are unique in having the seven and three quarters in there. But if the seven and three quarters is the floor, then why is it even in there?
All right. We, let's take our first vote. Um, we will do a roll call vote and we will start with Mrs. Orton.
Okay, what?
So I means you approved the motion as it is. Nay means you don't know as the motion as it is.
And approving grievance.
Right, with the compensation as is.
As is.
Nay.
All right. Uh, Ms. Rotowski.
Nay.
Ms. Schwartz.
Nay.
Chair votes nay. So we have, that first motion has been defeated and we would entertain other motions. And again, they don't have to make a motion. I, I mean, as it sits right now, the motion to approve the grievance has been denied. You, we can, the board is able to leave it at that. The board can make another motion in a different way, or that's for, yes, Dr. Hocker?
Mr. President, if I may, just for clarification, um, this specific action item on this special board meeting was to rule, um, one way or the other on this grievance. I, I believe that, uh, to do the best justice, I mean, obviously in this, this grievance, as Jason, everybody has summarized it, it has to do with whether or not a violation of the work agreement has occurred. And, and the board just voted four, zero that it did not. I think the, the, if there's thoughts and conversations about creating some sort of a appreciation, award, something along those lines, um, I would encourage the board not to rush into that today and to schedule a, a follow-up, uh, meeting and, and have some, uh, tasks and assignments by administration to work out, you know, solutions and options. Um, because as you said, this, uh, this, this is, this is, you know, to, to appreciate folks, you may want to consider the bigger picture. And so I'm not sure if, uh, I just don't want you to feel like you have to be rushed into, to doing something today.
Thank you, Dr. Hocker. I do want to afford the board the opportunity though, with that. Yes, the, the motion was voted down as, as it was. We'll pause because if there was, if there is another motion specifically respective of that, then we'll hear it. If not, then again, the board has the power at any time to reconvene through a special meeting or a regular board meeting and bring forth another motion, so.
Well, I do feel there needs to be more discussion on that. We need, obviously it's bigger than what I had originally thought. And so I would like to figure something else out and artfully say.
Yes. So with that, I mean, I think what we could, we certainly could re, we could adjourn in recess and then we can, we have options. Like I said, we can call another special meeting once we've had time to figure out what that other solution may be. And I, I started this by saying, and I, I would guess that you would agree with me that, um, we recognize that there's a, an issue with this and as the board would like to help be part of the solution to figuring this out. We just voted the day that the grievance as written as it was, with the compensation as it was, was, we voted no on that. But we, I think we still acknowledge that we'd like this, there to be better resolutions somehow with this, right?
Absolutely.
So I don't know that we have a motion to that effect right now. And so because we, well, maybe we do.
Well, no, because, right, if the grievance is over, then we need Dave, right? Because Dave recused himself on the grievance. So if we do anything with the board with that grievance, we gotta have Dave, right?
I'd say that, yeah, I'd have to give it a little more thought, but I don't know that in the big picture that, yeah, I think he'd be back into play and that would be or I don't think you'd have to recuse yourself from the bigger picture, you know, unless it's, yes. If there was another motion that was specific to addressing those 25 teachers, then I imagine he would continue to recuse himself from that. If there is a motion or a resolution or something that addresses the bigger picture, then I would guess he would feel comfortable jumping back into that conversation.
And I agree with Kim. I mean, definitely more discussion needs to take place, especially as we look towards the future and CTE online classes. I know that's a concern as well that was listed in there. So those are things that we definitely need to start moving forward with.
All right. So if I'm hearing folks correctly, then we will plan on adjouring this meeting with the understanding that this needs, it, we, we don't feel resolution or closure with this, but at this juncture, we voted no on the grievance as written. And we as a board would like to address this again and to get to a resolution that we feel good about. Is that clear?
How much time would we need to start the next process?
There, that I thought, I don't, I, I think by the next board meeting, we could have some, some, at least some beginning talking points. I think it, uh, really just boils down to what's the pleasure of the board and, uh, we, we want to make sure that everybody's, as President Sisza said, that, that we are thankful and grateful for everything that they've done so far. And, and what can we have in place to make everybody feel happy and grateful as we continue to move forward? Uh, I know high school administration has already, um, implemented some changes of even today to try to help the cause. Um, we can, we can see how that goes and, and add on to that and, and create further conversations there. Obviously, this is a year for future negotiations. There could be some opportunities to address some things specifically in, um, in negotiations. And, and again, with time, um, at our, at our disposal, we can, uh, the, the board can, can look at the big picture of, of finding out, you know, is there avenues to, as you said, perhaps, uh, address the online needs of, of the high school students in a different manner than is currently being addressed, um, as compared to what's happening at the middle school and the, and elementary. Each one is, is independent and, and that was, that was recognized as well in the, in the last presentations that you had. So with that, Kim, I, I think, uh, if you, if it's okay with you, we can, we can add that as a, um, item on the agenda. If you'd like to have a special meeting, you know, before then or right after then, we certainly could, could have a time where that's all that's the item. And we could spend some time, um, talking about that as well.
Right. And I, I just, I don't want it to drag on. I mean, if we're going to, if, I mean, I personally feel that the contract was broken. Maybe not to the extent once it was for the monetarily. And so personally, I would like to have a little bit more investigation to figure that out. And, and to me, appreciation is, you know, not cookies or flowers or anything like that. It's monetary compensation. And I don't, you know, it all comes to compromise and negotiation and, and, um, I'd really like to move in that direction and see if we can figure this out. Without a lawsuit.
One, one piece that I'll bring up too, that to me is evident, it's not a surprise, is that, you know, things are not like we'd like them to be at the high school between teachers and administration staff. And we know that we'd like to see that. And, and in part, this is indicative of that. I mean, in, in the best case ideal world, things aren't going well with this. Teachers speak up to the administration and they figure out a solution together that makes it work for everyone, right? That's the best case scenario. That, that didn't happen. The fact that grievance comes all the way to us tells us that that's not happening. So when we look at, how do we move forward and get resolution and stuff? That's the big piece that we have, that needs to be fixed in our district. And that's bigger than this grievance. And I, I, I think all parties would want that. I would guess the administration, I would guess the teachers, I know the school board all wants that to be the case. So I think that's a priority for us in our district to get that right. Because that's, that's key to everything. And so we have got to get that right. So, and I know that it's not today at this moment, but I think one thing that's coming out of this too, is I think that's a priority. And that's a huge priority. And I, I certainly would, um, at this point, put myself for it, anywhere that I can help be a part of those meetings, discussions. If there's a way to, to do that, we need to do that. Because this is, it's, and it's not a new, I don't act like this just happened for the first time during the pandemic. Uh, we, this has been going on for years and we got, we gotta fix it at the district moving forward. So, um, let's, based on all that, we will, um, adjourn and we will determine whether we have a special meeting or we'll address it at the next board meeting. But one of the two things will happen. It'll either be a special meeting before the next board meeting or this will be a definite item on the next board meeting. So, right, with that, we will adjourn.